The time has arrived. The chair opens the February 21, 2024, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board here at Town Hall in the White Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. The time is 7:00 PM. I welcome everyone here tonight. We're being broadcast live on Local Channel 8 and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve or modify tonight. The first one is the long one, January 17. Does anybody have any edits or comments?
I make a motion to-
No comments? Make a motion?
Make a motion to accept as presented with congratulations to our recording secretary for making minutes of a five-hour meeting.
Any second? Anyone opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay, good. Then we go to the February 7 minutes of the meeting. Anyone have edits or changes of any sort?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of February 7, 2024, as presented.
Second?
I can second if I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here. You can't second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. One abstention and three.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's okay.
Yeah, we passed it.
It passes with you.
All right. So now we have public comment. Does anyone wish to speak? Arden?
Arden Russell, Sturgis Lane. I have a comment about the issue on your agenda, Southworth Properties, 275 Quinnaquissett Avenue. I just distributed to everybody a copy of Mashpee's Flow Neutral Regulation, Chapter 108. This is a general bylaw that was adopted in May of 2021, and therefore it's currently in effect. The purpose of the Flow Neutral Bylaw is to manage present and future wastewater flows. Adoption of a Flow Neutral Regulation is required by DEP in order to receive SRF funding for wastewater construction, which Mashpee has done. The bylaw is applicable to all property located in town, whether it's connected to a municipal sewer system, an onsite septic system, or a private sewer system, every single parcel. Section 108-2 applicability states that the present and future wastewater flow to any onsite sewage disposal or sewer system shall be limited to the flows permitted from such properties as of the effective date of the Mashpee Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, RCWMP, which is July 1, 2015. Wastewater flows, therefore, are locked into that which would have been permitted as of July of 2015. So per Section 108.5A, if somebody's looking for a modification to their property to a single-family residence, which 275 Quinnaquissett Avenue is a single-family residence, that property is limited to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet, as per Title V. The total number of bedrooms at 275 Quinnaquissett Avenue cannot be increased above that amount, regardless of how any future development there might be permitted, regardless of whether it is or is not annexed to Willoughby's special permit. There is no ability for 275 Quinnaquissett Avenue to accommodate 42 bedrooms, as is being proposed by Southworth. The Flow Neutral Bylaw prohibits that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No further public comment. We'll move on. We have an A and R, approval not required. The applicant is David Harsh. Is he here? Yes, he is. The location is 16 Sunset Strip, Lot 1, and 234 Main Street, Lot 2, map parcels 37-71-0, number 16, and 27-71-0, number 234. I'll just go over, for purposes of people who are listening, what we have here. We have a Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval. The applicant is David Harsh, and the property in question is 16 Sunset Strip. He's the owner of that. And there's another owner of the other parcel, Nathan Connolly. So that was Form A for David Harsh. There's a check here to the Town of Mashpee from Cape Cod Islands, from the engineers who did this. Form N, notice of application filing with the Mashpee Planning Board. This is Matthew Costa. Is he here tonight?
No, I'm Jake Frickie. I'm here with Cape Cod Islands Engineering.
I'm sorry, you're who?
I'm Jake Frickie. I'm here with Cape Cod Islands Engineering.
Okay. And this concerns, got permission from David Harsh to do this thing. And the next one is an attestation from the treasurer. David Harsh is owner of the property. He's not in arrears of any payment, which I guess is a requirement, any arrears, payment of any local taxes. Next letter is a letter to Town Planner from David Harsh, giving your firm permission to speak. And then the deeds showing that David Harsh and Nathan Connolly are the owners of these two properties. Okay, you may proceed.
Tonight, what we're looking at here is an equal area land swap between two parcels. The area to be swapped is 7,006 square feet. Both parcels have frontage on Public Way, and the frontage prior to the swap remains the same after the swap. We're not changing any frontage. We're not changing any total area of either of the lots. This is just an equal area swap for the mutual benefit of the two applicants.
Okay. Do you want to explain? We'll take a look at that map and explain how these parcels are being re-divided.
Certainly, the parcel 37-71-0 is approximately rectangular portion of the lot on the southeast side of the map, and it is being shortened by some to allow 37-72-0 to gain a little bit more land around their house area. And that 7,006 square feet, which is being taken off of the westerly end, is being added to the northerly side of parcel 37-71-0, as shown on the plan.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Nope.
Mary? Mike?
No.
You don't have any? Dale? No questions? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to endorse this A and R plan as presented.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye here. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You can sign here, please.
You gotta sign.
You gotta sign, yeah. I can't believe I did this. Are you speaking to anyone? We'll just take a recess for a few minutes.
Excuse me, I think we'll just take a recess for a few minutes.
Make sure we don't blow up.
Person, a sloppy person.
What sloppy person did this? Try to be hydrated.
And I needed it because I wanted this.
Go get some more. Oh, gosh, anyway.
We're all in this together, you know what I mean?
And the laptop was like going berserk. I'm like, oh, God.
Why the computer was going?
No, she laid something on it.
There was some water on the track pad, so it was getting weird.
Jess built her cup up. Yep.
All right. All right. We got your back.
You waxed my-
Yeah, waxed on, waxed off. Yeah.
I believe everyone signed this. I just don't want to blow up.
I think I lost your own brand number.
I think I can survive.
Can you imagine?
I can survive. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Everybody.
You got over the public hearing?
The agenda.
What do you need?
Agenda. Did you pick something out, Evan?
Do you need the public hearing notice?
I've got it. Okay. Okay, well, it's 7:10. Time for our public hearing. Our applicant is Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. Our public notice for the planning board pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 1, 2023, at 7:10 PM at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willoughby Country Club special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willoughby Golf Course at 275 Quinnaquissett Avenue, map 69, Block 32. The existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willoughby project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinnaquissett into the Willoughby special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willoughby project. Attorney Mc- McCallum, your name is hard to pronounce for some reason.
That's hard.
I was going to have you hold on any of your proposed mitigation commitments and let the engineer speak first?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, great. I call Matthew Eddy.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi. Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a report?
Well, Jack, we're gonna kind of get into it, but I will kind of walk through the layout revisions that we've done, and then I'll turn back over to Jack in response to-
All right.
I'm really having a problem hearing you. Hold on a minute. What can we do about that?
Listen intently and ask Matt to speak loudly.
Loudly and slowly.
Okay, Matt, if you will, please speak much louder and slower.
Okay. In response to the last planning board hearing-
Okay.
We responded to the comments that the planning board made and have submitted revised layouts, master layout plan, and the master mitigation plan. We have, the unit count is still at 12 units. We've relocated units 9 through 12 to eliminate the wetland impact from those lots. We have eliminated the Village Green recreational area from the project. This eliminates those associated wetland and buffer impacts with that area. The Village Green area is the area that's located to the east of where the units are. With the changes that have been made, the final wetland impact area has been reduced down to 937 square feet. The original proposal that was submitted almost a year ago now, originally we were at around 43,000 square feet of wetland impact, again, been reduced down to 937 square feet. Of that, the only bordering vegetated wetland impact is 191 square feet, and that's directly adjacent to the Quinnaquissett Road. That impact is not needed for the unit development for Cranberry Point. That impact is actually there to intercept the existing stormwater runoff that comes off of Quinnaquissett Road and enters into that adjacent wetland system untreated off of the existing road. So we have left that impact area there, and all it is, is to just, we have to grade a swale across the shoulder. It's actually almost the majority, almost all of that impact is within the Quinnaquissett Road layout, because we have to grade a swale across that shoulder of the road to intercept that runoff, and we're diverting it into our pre-treatment stormwater for bay. Again, we've left that impact in there, as we believe that is an environmental benefit overall, and I believe both the planning board and Conservation Commission felt that that was a positive part and positive impact of the project, so we have left that in there. Again, it's not needed. It could be eliminated and further reduce the wetland impact, but again, we felt that it was a positive aspect for the environment. The remaining 746 square feet of wetland impact is a small, isolated, vegetated wetland. That actually does not require mitigation under the Wetlands Protection Act. It does under the Mashpee Conservation Bylaw. So again, 746 square feet of an isolated vegetated well. And then in addition, while the wetland impact has been reduced, the overall mitigation being proposed by the bog restoration has been increased to 5.32 acres. So that includes all of the bogs that are along Quaker Run south of Quinnaquissett. So that increased the prior plan submission that we went through the last hearing. We're at 2.03 acres of bog mitigation. Again, we've increased it to 5.32 acres, so an additional, almost an additional three acres on top of what was being proposed before, while the wetland impacts are being reduced. And again, that was in response to comments made by the planning board, and so we've made that increased proposal. And just as a note, when you look at the actual wetland impact area of, again, 937 square feet, and then now with the bog restoration of 5.32 acres, the actual ratio of bog mitigation to the wetland impact is almost 250 to 1, whereas the Mashpee Conservation Bylaw only requires a mitigation ratio of 2 to 1. So again, a very, very significant benefit that's being provided, an environmental benefit to taking those active bogs out of production and restoring those to natural wetland systems. So those are the changes that were made to the plans that you have before you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Jack McCallum. Thank you.
Matt, if I may, I saw in the notes that this bog restoration is, the cost is in the neighborhood of $750,000. What is the basis for that number?
It's approximately $150,000 an acre for the restoration. I believe Drew McManus is attending the hearing as well, the conservation agent, he could probably speak to that as well. I know the Town of Mashpee is going through some fog restoration work as well, so he can probably, you know, back that number, but it's based on, you know, an estimated $150,000 per acre of fog restoration.
How many acres does the Quaker Run and the bogs run? That may not be the right question, but how big is the acreage where the Quaker Run runs with the bogs?
I'm not totally following your question, but the, all of the bogs south of Quinnaquissett adjacent to our project in the long, south of Quinnaquissett is 5.32 acres. So all of, we're restoring all of the bogs along Quaker Run from Quinnaquissett all the way to the south. So from Quinnaquissett Road, along Quaker Run, you will have, the bogs will be restored to natural wetland system, and that flows out, Drew can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe from there all the way out to Shoestring Bay would then be all natural wetland system.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have questions?
No.
Questions? No questions. I thought there was a drainage problem, a grading and drainage problem?
No, it's relative to the preparation of the plan. The applicant wanted the feedback of the planning board prior to revising the sheets relative to the grading and drainage plan, because the layout's been slightly modified. So before investing in the modifications of those sheets, the applicant was looking for your feedback on the new layout.
Okay. Can you, can we, oh, I guess we can't put it up on the screen. Can we talk about it and look at it at the same time?
The new sheets?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
So this, the modification is just, Matt, is just in planning right now? It's not, it's not, nothing's been done? Because we haven't approved it, is that, is that it?
That's us, though, too.
What's that?
They've cut out to the panibloid so they can move along.
Yeah.
It's been laid out and engineered, but Matt has not completed all the drainage calculations for it, et cetera. At this point, we are looking for some preliminary feedback before taking that additional step.
Okay. Okay, Matt?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we have not modified the grading, the final grading plan with these adjustments we did on these final four units move. Just again, because we need to get, you know, we'd like to have understanding from the planning board that this is making sense, and then it's a fairly straightforward modification to the grading around those four units. We basically just rotated and shifted the units at a retaining wall, so it would just be a, you know, fairly straightforward grading modification, I think, as she could respond to that, too, as far as, you know, if she's in agreement that it'll be fairly straightforward. You know, I don't think it has any, you know, significant bearing.
How much time does it take to do that?
I mean, if the, if the planning board says that they are comfortable with this layout, I would say, you know, we could probably have it buttoned up for the, you know, next hearing in two weeks.
Okay. And Ed, you like the layout? You're comfortable with it? You think it's a good layout? Ed, Tashi?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. In a nutshell, just wrapping up what Matt had mentioned, you know, they've made some changes to the plan based on, as he said, comments from the board. The current setback exceeds 65 feet. I think it's closer to maybe almost 70 feet. Might be tight at cottage number 12, but exceeds 65 feet for the frontage of the road. It does a lot of things in terms of improvement by reducing units that the board had asked about, and the stormwater work I'd asked about earlier this week when Matt sent us the plan, and yet he confirmed exactly what he mentioned, that they're waiting for more or less concurrence from the board members before he spends the time to complete the grading and drainage, which I would ask him to do and submit the drainage analysis to me to look at, and it is a relatively straightforward thing. In my last official quote comments that I made in writing about this on December 6 via email, they were all very minor comments. Some of the comments have been addressed already, even with this revised plan, but he is going to need to provide that final full set of design plans, which include the grading and drainage, and the revised drainage calculations before we can pass, I can pass final judgment or final concurrence on it, but it is a fairly straightforward thing. I would agree with Matt's comments about that.
Okay. Drew, you're here. Do you have any comments on this whole thing?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Speak up a little bit, please.
Sure. So Drew McManus, Town of Mashpee Conservation Agent. Yes, Matt Eddy has sent me the revised plans to show the changes that he has previously described, and I'll just say, as a disclaimer, we haven't received a peer review yet from LHC Environmental, so my, you know, my comments on this are, you know, in lieu of receiving the peer review, but overall, based on the changes, the reduction in alteration of BBW, the substantial reduction, and significant substantial increase in mitigation of the bogs in the lower half of Quaker Run are certainly considered to be a positive and an environmental benefit. Certainly, the bog restoration is, as Matt described, significantly well above and beyond what we would normally require. And also, as Matt had said, the stretch of river below, south of these bogs, is mostly naturalized, so that would really kind of, you know, the impact for restoration would be pretty significant by expanding.
Hey, Evan. He lost you. He's on. I don't have my phone to text him. Thank you, mate. Drew, you're on mute.
Drew, I think we lost your audio. I think you might have to dial back in.
I'm gonna write to him. Hold on.
He's certainly doing a great job telling us everything.
He'll be back.
Let me ask you a question, and maybe it's not a good question, but something to think about. If the drainage and grading has not been done, if we were inclined to close out this public hearing tonight, would it make more sense to keep it, keep it open? Or if we closed it, we could always make that a condition of the permit and then ask for ASBILs. Do you have any?
Sorry, this is Drew again. I got, I must have got cut out from our-
Yeah, you did. Yep.
Ed, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah. So-
Let me-
naturalized, so that would really kind of, you know, the impact for restoration would be pretty significant by expanding.
Hey, Abby. He lost you.
He's on, I don't have my phone to text him.
Thank you, mate. Drew, you're on mute.
Drew, I think we lost your audio. I think you might have to dial back in.
I'm going to write to him, hold on.
He's certainly doing a great job telling us everything.
Let me ask you a question, and maybe it's not a good question, but something to think about. If the drainage and grading has not been done, if we were inclined to close out this public hearing tonight, would it make more sense to keep it, keep it open? Or if we closed it, we could always make that a condition of the permit and then ask for ASBILs? Do you have any?
Sorry, this is Drew again. I must have got cut out from audio.
Yeah, you did. Yep.
Ed, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah.
So, let me, all right, I'll let Drew go ahead and say what he was saying first.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure where I was left off as far as audio, but in general, the changes that are-
You were waiting for LEC comments.
Yes, yes, thank you. So, you know, in light of that, I think that the proposal, the revisions to reduce impact to border vegetated wetlands and to significantly enhance the mitigation, well above and beyond what we would normally require, are net environmental benefit aspects of this and the stormwater area off the shoulder of Quinnequisset. The impacts of that wetland are certainly outweighed by the benefits of stormwater remediation, so I have zero concerns about that. And the stretch of river south of the proposed restored bog is naturalized, so this restoration of five-plus acres of bog in this last stretch of the river, you know, in terms of the connectivity to the only really naturalized portion of the river, I think would be a substantial enhancement in terms of mitigation. So, those are my comments.
Okay. The question I asked Ed, and anyone is free to respond, if we were to close out this public hearing tonight, would it be better to continue the public hearing until we get the drainage and the grading done? Or we could, I guess, we could close it out and make that a condition in the special permit and require ASBILs when the job is done?
Madam Chair, I can respond to that briefly. It's certainly entirely up to the board and how they'd like to proceed. However, I will say that it is a very common practice in other communities that I work in, that a condition of approval is to provide final design plans for my review and approval. Usually, there's a timeframe within six months or something to show some finalization, some effort, positive effort on part of the applicant. You could do that and also include another condition that they already have to do, and that is to obtain the order of conditions from the town, from the Mashpee Conservation Commission. But it is very, it's certainly up to the comfort level of the board. I see no issues in terms of engineering design, in terms of major change. I think that preparing grading and drainage plans and revised calculations are fairly straightforward, and I can work that out with Matt Eddy directly and get it to a point where I can recommend endorsement of the plan. That's if, again, the board is comfortable with proceeding that way tonight.
Okay, thank you. Troy, do you wish to speak? Are you just listening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it over to Jack, who I have just here, really, to answer any questions that come up with the board.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions for these gentlemen?
I don't.
Okay. Nope.
Should we wait for the report that the basic conditions wait for, too? Because he hasn't got that report yet to say which way it's going, you know? And that report, come back and say, is that saying it's a good idea or it's a great idea?
Can you hear?
We could put that on the condition.
Yeah.
Close this out and put that on the condition, too. Because I'd like to see that report, because that's what we hired them for, to give us the report of how this is all going to be worked out and if it's a benefit or not.
Just a reminder, a reminder is that when you, if and when you decide to close the public hearing and vote accordingly, you have 90 days thereafter to file a decision. So, be considerate of how much time would be needed to draft a decision, whatever that decision would be. If you're going to condition an approval or disapproval, if you're going to condition any action on the submission of a completed LEC report, and that report is not delivered within 90 days, I would caution you against closing the public hearing if you're bound up against that regulatory window. It seems to me, based on the information that's been presented so far, that it might be prudent to not close the public hearing tonight and offer some direction to the applicant relative to the modifications that have been made and offer some response to the other revisions that have been proposed. It's been past practice of the board generally to cite the plan sheets with the revisions in the written decision themselves. And so, it's not a requirement, but that is your, has been your general practice since I've worked for the town.
Our engineer did say we could condition it on the issuance of a certificate of compliance from the Conservation Commission.
Yes, I think that's what he said.
So, I mean, I've read the LEC letter, and the issue that I brought up last time on page four or five was about the BVW, right? Matt, can you hear me? It's Mary.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I'm sure that you know what paragraph I'm looking at on page four of the LEC letter, and it talks about a net loss of 2,269 square feet of BVW. And you modified the plans, so what is the net loss of BVW right now?
It's only that 190 square feet that's associated with the intercepting the runoff off of Quinnequisset Road.
So, with that, with that paragraph addressed, I don't, I don't think there's any barrier to, I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
You know, Drew could expound off of my thoughts on this, but I think, you know, the LEC letter, if I follow where you're referring to, Mary, is, you know, with the reduction of the impact, with the mitigation proposed, you know, I definitely think it meets and far exceeds the requirements of both the Wetland Protection Act and the Mashpee Conservation Bylaw. Again, the only BVW impact is that impact associated directly adjacent to Quinnequisset Road for intercepting the stormwater runoff, which, again, is a benefit to that system. Drew, I don't know if you could maybe expound or add upon as far as your thoughts to, you know, I think the paragraph that Mary is referring to in LEC's letter.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, yeah, that impact to BVW, I think I might have stated this earlier, would be really kind of, you know, mitigated for by improving stormwater runoff. So, I think that's really not something that the commission nor what I imagine is LEC's final peer review would have an issue with. And then, as I said previously, you know, with the understanding we haven't received the peer review yet, that these proposed revisions are nothing but a positive in terms of wetland impact and mitigation. So, I would venture to guess that LEC would most likely concur with that. But again, you know, we haven't received their peer review, so, but I think that, you know, these revisions are substantially improved and the impact substantially reduced for wetland impacts overall based on these revisions. So, I would anticipate LEC would most likely concur.
Madam Chair, if you could somehow bring up sheet 6.0, which is the sheet behind this one, and we can point out to the board members where the two small areas of impact are.
Oh, yes.
And that would give everyone an understanding of where we're talking about that Matt's referring to.
So, when you say here, we've adjusted and removed the units from the bordering vegetated wetlands, you're saying, you're talking about the 12 units we have now as opposed to the 14?
Right.
And you've moved them out of the bordering vegetated wetlands?
That's correct.
Completely?
So, there's a, there's a small area here that Matt's referring to?
Yes.
191 feet?
Okay.
And a small area here near this unit? And Matt, that's what, 746 behind cottage number?
Yeah, and that's correct, and that's the isolated, that's the isolated vegetated wetland. That is not a BVW, which is bordering vegetated wetland, so, yeah.
Right.
Dennis, you can, you can condition it that if there's any changes to the master mitigation plan? If you like the master mitigation plan, there's any change, like you could have another condition that said, you know, any changes to the master mitigation plan has to be approved by the planning board?
That was good.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
And when you say, I'm looking over where you were pointing about the isolated vegetated wetland, explain why that's isolated, if you would.
Well, based on the, you know, the small area of topography, it is also not-
Could you put it, put that back, please?
It's not what's referred to as hydraulically connected to any system, meaning that you don't have water flow into and out of that system connecting into a, you know, more expansive wetland system. It's a small, isolated depression. The way that actually, I believe, was created, that, you know, historically, back many, many years ago, decades ago, it looks to me, and Drew could, you know, say whether he, you know, agrees or not, but I think that that was actually an excavation when they were, you know, doing the active bog, they used fans for the bog. It looked to me like it was a small excavation that was made. And if you actually go out there and walk the site, and if you recall when we all walked the site, you know, several months ago, that area is literally just a small, dry depression that, I mean, it's, I think you would walk by that and not, you wouldn't know that that was a wetland at all. It's a very small, isolated, the reason they call it isolated is because, again, it's hydraulically connected, you don't have water flow that connects to that wetland system to another wetland system.
Is there water in that system right there?
I'm sorry?
Is, there's water in that isolated, that it doesn't flow?
Yeah, and there's no water in it. It doesn't have any standing water in it, it's dry.
No standing water. So, you wouldn't know it's a wetland?
Yeah, I mean, you know, a layperson walking by that would not know that that was a wetland. It's, you know, when you think of a wetland, it doesn't, that small system, it's not something that you would think of normally.
It may not have standing water all of the year. It may have standing water very shallow right after a storm event, but that is, that's enough because it's a depression. It exhibits the definition of a wetland system under the Wetland Protection Act. So, it soils, it vegetation, it's probably called right, Matt, but, you know.
It's soils, vegetation, right. Right, correct.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for anyone?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I do have just a quick comment, and it's, I think it was Mary who made the comment and referenced the certificate of compliance in her comment on a possible condition. It's actually, the terminology is order of conditions. The certificate of compliance is what's used to close out projects once they've been completed. So, just to clarify the-
Order of conditions, okay.
Order of conditions, yeah. That's the name of the permit that we issue under a notice of intent application.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. Anything else? Okay. All right. Jack?
Thank you. Good evening. Much of what I would have to cover has already been discussed here, but I will, in light of the audio quality, I'll just quickly summarize, you know, the elements we set forth in the letter from Tom Southworth dated February 2024. And, you know, the impetus behind this was, I think you may recall, at the end of the last meeting, we had a long discussion, the board had a long discussion with town council about their authority and the status of things, but the suggestion was made that this board has the ability to mitigate concerns about specific issues by requiring mitigation commitments from the developer. And we then had a brief discussion informally with the board about the sorts of things that were important to the board and that they would like us to address. And this letter is a summary and reflection of that. So, the first point was a simple one, but an important one. You know, the point was made by one of the board members that they were very concerned about the location of several units had, were actually slightly into the wetland. That led to that reconfiguration, which Matt just led us through by reorienting those buildings and turning garages. We were able to completely eliminate any incursion into the bordering vegetation. You know, more importantly, we've completely abandoned at this point our original concept of a village green, which would have had sizable wetland impacts, so that we have gone from an original proposal of 43,000 feet of impact to wetlands to under 1,000 to 937. That was the first item. The second item, and I think it's important, is pretext. We said many times during this process, we realized that proposing something that involved 40,000 square feet of wetland impact was a big ask, and we had come forward with what we thought was a big mitigation proposal, which was over two acres of bog restoration. We've now eliminated that wetland impact, but nevertheless, we kept those two acres that we had previously committed to, and we added another three. So, we have five acres of bog restoration as part of this mitigation commitment. You know, we estimate the cost based on discussions with LEC and Fussit O'Neil, who's done this for the town of Mashpee, that that represents about $750,000. And, you know, from my perspective, this is one of the, you know, we often talk, when we talk about climate issues and environmental impacts, that you can't turn the clock back. But that's exactly what we're attempting to do here. These bogs, we found out at a little history, these bogs have been operating here for over 100 years under the same family. Bobby Hallett, God rest his soul, was there for many, many years, very well-known in Mashpee, and now his son is doing it. And what was always a quaint and sort of defining characteristic of Cape Cod, I think, is now seen in a different light today, that this just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have an active agricultural use within a wetland system, where the underlying function of those systems is to remove pollutants. You know, the nature of agriculture is that it introduces it. And so, we think that that's a substantial step in that direction. You know, it's something that Southworth as a company wants to do. They, you know, value their reputation on environmental matters, and we have Eleanor Brown, who couldn't be with us, but is the Director of Sustainability, has been actively talking with Bobby Hallett's son and others about, you know, looking at organic practices for the remainder of the bogs that are out there. They are less productive, as everything is today, because unfortunately, one of the other consequences of our mild winters is that the bog farmers no longer can sand the bogs. They used to do that by driving on the ice, spreading the sand, and letting it sink in in the, in the spring. You know, now it's a rare winter where we get that. So, you know, that's, that's the second, the second point. So, we have five acres of active restoration. The last item, again, something raised by the board, and, you know, we've been here in Mashpee a long time. We have our own issues at Willow Bend on workforce housing, and we know affordable housing is a very important issue. And we're proposing a contribution of $90,000 in cash to the town as a mitigation directed at, to be dedicated to affordable housing. And we would propose to do that in two installments, one before we start work and one, you know, before we finish. And I had discussions, I think Mary suggested we speak to Elizabeth Wade at Habitat. We did that. She shared with us the other project they recently partnered on with the- on, uh, with the town and the planning board. Uh, it did something like this. And, uh, you know, we also talked possibly about an in-kind donation of some land, which would be in lieu of this, uh, but frankly, the discussion with her was, she said the cash would be more helpful because it could help get other product, other projects off the ground and help secure the construction financing needed to build that. But we are open to further discussion around this. So, uh, you know, that's it. I think these, these commitments total about $900,000. That's a real number. Um, you know, it's, uh, very significant, and we've tried to target it at the things that are most meaningful and pressing in the town right now, you know, being affordable housing, uh, water quality. Uh, you know, I, I point out again that this will generate on the order of $125,000 annually, uh, without any likely draw on municipal services. I know the town's considering an override reductions in the school budget. Um, you know, I, I'm not here to tell you this is a perfect project. I understand, you know, people have concerns about it. It does take advantage of the 1985 zoning, but I think, you know, what we're proposing now can be, it should be seen as potentially a win-win for the town and for us, where we address some underlying problems, which aren't going to be addressed if this project doesn't get done, and, you know, do it in a, in a, in a sensitive, and I'm not suggesting perfect, but in a sensitive way, treating the wastewater, you know, uh, drastically reducing the wetland impact. So, so that's, that's the summary of, of where we are on the mitigation.
Okay. Well, I think we should talk about mitigation. I have some ideas. Uh, let's, let's go around the room and see what other people say. Mary?
Sorry, Dennis. The mitigation plan that you've put forward does not address my concerns.
I can't hear you, Mary.
The mitigation plan that you've put forward has not addressed my concerns.
I, I think you've done a good job coming forward with what you did, and appreciate that effort.
Dennis?
The mitigation, is that for this project, or is that for the bedroom count too?
It's for this project, but, you know, we would like to resolve the bedroom count as part of that.
Okay, so we can ask for more mitigation on the bedroom count?
Well, no, I, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I, you know.
You only are giving us, what'd you say, $90,000?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's not enough for me to be honest. Yeah. I like what you did with the, you know, the wetlands and stuff. That's a good part. I like what you did with the wetlands and stuff. And now, with the restoration, do you have to put up any money to make sure that worked?
Yeah, we, we, we say in the letter, we would bond that, so.
Okay, you bond that.
We would come up with a number with the town's peer reviewer and, you know, put that on bond, just like a subdivision road with the, uh, you know, with the town, with some sort of premium, be it 110% or 125%. And, um, that would, you know, not be released until the work was completed and, I guess, a, a certificate of compliance for that work was done.
Okay, another question. You're over the bedroom count by a hundred and something?
My last estimate, I think, was 134.
Okay, 134, and then you could add another, at least 48 more bedrooms with the 12 units if they have four bedrooms.
Well, that would include.
The 134 is inclusive of those.
Wait a minute.
Okay, that includes that.
Let me, let me help you with that, because I, I kept looking into that. On this paper that Evan put together back in August 2023, did you happen to make copies for anybody on the board? Because.
Not tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, do you recall this paper?
Yes, I have a copy.
All right. So I'll, I'll just read what it says at the back part here. The bottom line here, bedrooms built and occupied, 855.
Right.
Bedrooms under construction, 16 at that time. Bedrooms planned, 68, and Cranberry Point, 48. So it came to a total of 987. So if you subtract, you go 987 minus 853, you come up with 134 excess bedrooms.
Right, well, I, I understand the math.
But my point was, well, 134 bedrooms, I want to get more money per bedroom. He's giving us $90,000.
Well, that's strictly just for the, the, this project here, the 12 units.
No, but it's for the whole, we have to give them the count of the bedrooms. It's for the whole.
Dennis, you're suggesting there should be a dollar value applied per bedroom over 853?
Yeah. That's what I'm looking at. I mean, it, it don't seem like a, a good price for all those extra bedrooms they get, because when they sell those houses, those extra bedrooms are probably $30, $40,000 more on the house, you know, per house.
If you were to give $2,500 for 134 bedrooms, the cash would be 335,000. So I think we may be looking for something between 90 and 335.
Yeah, I mean, we, as you know, I, I was trying to sort of get beyond that issue. We, we don't agree, uh, as you know, and I don't think it's productive to beat the dead horse, but, uh, you know, we don't agree that those, there's any problem with the bedrooms that have been built. Our, our view is, these have been approved by the board, you know, we went through the process. $90,000 is a substantial amount of money, and, you know, again, this is 12 units. You're already talking approaching a million dollars here. It's, um, I mean, Troy, I'll let, I'll let you speak to it because you, you have the pocketbook, but, um.
Yeah, but the bog restoration benefits you, though, because those houses were encroaching on the wetland, so you had to move that back. I mean.
No, the bog restoration, I mean, would this board entertain a reduction in the bog? If we took, if you want more money for affordable housing.
No, I don't think so.
Well, you can't, you, you, you know, you've got to have priorities in life, I guess.
Well, you violate the special permit going over the bedrooms. Now, we could argue about who should have been checking on that and who, and that way, but you guys should have been checking on that, too. And you should have been going by the special permit and saying, hey, we're all with the bedroom permit. You just kept on going like it was happy gold. They, you know, I mean, I, I want to close this out and move on, but that $90,000 is, I could tell you is not enough.
Suggestion, uh, just for the purpose of discussion. Uh, the applicant contemplated his discussions, or at least enumerated his discussions with Habitat relative to land donation in lieu of the cash contribution. Is there room for discussion with the board members, uh, relative to the cash contribution and a land donation?
Oh, you're going to give us some land, too?
I'm asking. This is for discussion purposes.
Okay, then let me just add something else. If you, you're going to build, if you want to build 12 units, that leaves two more that could be built to get to the 285.
287.
287, rather. Yeah, 280, it'll be 285 if you build.
Yeah.
The 12.
Yeah. Okay, 287. Would there be lots that you would donate to Habitat, you know, for subsidized housing?
Yeah, Troy, I'll defer to you on that. Um.
Yeah, so, um, there, within, as it relates to the, the 287, uh, I do think we would still intend to, uh, to complete the, uh, the existing entitlement of the two additional units. However, we do have, uh, and have identified several locations, or at least one location, where we could potentially provide, um, existing real estate that would be suitable for, uh, affordable housing, that could be, uh, part of this contribution.
What would the acreage be, or what would the size of the lots be?
It's, uh, approximately just over one half acre. Uh, it's located on Pompanesett Ave, which is down off of Cedar Street, if you know that area, heading down towards Kootuwa Bay. Uh, there's a series, uh, there's a small neighborhood subdivision in there. Uh, we own a patchwork of lots in there, most of which are conservation restricted, but we have three contiguous lots, and it is next to, uh, some town-owned land.
There are actually four town-owned lots in that vicinity that we've identified for potential Habitat projects.
I think the lot.
That are town-owned lots right now?
Yes, yes, on Ash, Cedar and Devon Streets.
I think it's Assessor's Lots. I believe it's 21, 22, 23 on map 77.
I, I have a question. Those 13 lots that people already bought or have permits that are inside your development, is that going to be eliminated now when we add these, except for two of them?
Uh, well, that's solely up to the discretion of the building commissioner, who is unable to be here tonight due to a family obligation. So, um.
What do you say about that, Jack? Are those people going to be guaranteed to build their houses because they already bought the lots?
We, excuse me, if we vote that, that, we, we don't have, we, do we, do we have the authority to vote and say we want them to be able to build on those lots?
No.
Well, you have the authority to modify your own permit, yes.
Under the special permit?
And it's up to the commissioner to interpret the conditions of the permit to determine its validity. But yes, the commissioner, I think, would generally give deference to the board's decisions.
Oh, and my, my other thing, the, the hotel that you're buying, I suggested, couldn't you add like a couple more apartments for residents on top of that building?
You said you can't build.
I defer to Troy on that, too. I, I know that's.
They got enough land in the back, too. You could add on.
Right.
What, what, Troy?
I would like to get, under the second part, the cash, something that could go to the Affordable Trust. That, I mean, 90,000, wouldn't get it, in my opinion.
So, so, Madam Chair, I, I think what I would suggest is that we do have at least one buildable lot that I'm aware of, that I think would be fine for us to provide an appraisal of, of value and be able to donate that as part of this contribution, um, if that is something that the board's interested in.
Is that, is that the half acre lot in?
Yes, there, it's a.
I'm hoping that's it. Yes, ma'am.
Its assessed value is $130,000, I believe, but it's probably worth, you know, any buildable lot in Mashpee, and I, I believe it is. I'd have to sit with, you know, Matt, but it's, uh, you know, it's been in separate ownership. It's not contiguous to anything else we own.
Yeah. What, what would you say would, if it's assessed at that number, 300,000?
Most building lots in Mashpee are around 300 to 350,000. Generally, you'll see them a little bit larger than a half an acre, but people's willingness to pay is quite high.
Is it a buildable lot?
Just like Jack had said, it's, it's more than likely, assuming that it's on a plan approved by a previous planning board or, or some other recorded instrument, and has never been held in common ownership, and isn't subject to merger with adjacent lots, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we would need to evaluate certain conditions. But if it were a lot to be donated to the trust for developments in affordable housing, um, and developed as a lip or a 40B, like Habitat often does, those issues would be, uh, waived under that process.
Well, if, if you just did the 750 and one buildable lot, that's $1,050,000. I think, I mean, you know, I'm not a builder. I don't know the cost of everything, but 12, 12 properties there, they're probably going to sell for a million and a half, something in that neighborhood.
Yep.
And.
If not more.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, the way things are going today, I, I think, for me, I could go along with this if we get more cash for the Affordable Housing Trust. Do you have an opinion? You, you're okay with what they're offering right now?
I think that they've tried to respond to almost everything we've asked for.
Yeah.
And I think at some point, we have to stop asking. Uh, if they're willing to go along with this acre, a half acre for affordable housing, that ups the ante a bit, and I felt comfortable before it, so I would feel comfortable now.
Mary, do you have an opinion?
The only thing I can tell you is that for a development of, like, 1 through 10, like, of 10 units, right, you'd be looking for 10% affordable housing, right?
Yeah.
So, um, so a buy, uh, I don't know what the, what the, in the HPP, what the affordability gap was. Like, that's the other way you can do it, is what our median sale price of a home is right now, minus what a low, moderate income household can afford, and that would get you a number. But I, I don't have the HPP in front of me. And, and that is closer to the $335,000 figure rather than the $90,000. But that's just one other way to look at it, is what would it cost to buy down, what, what would it cost to provide an off-site affordable unit? So I don't know what the affordability gap.
Well, the ones I know are in Great Neck Road, those old recent. Habitat, what do they cost to build?
Well, I mean, construction costs are high. Troy is probably the best person to answer that, but I'll do my best to respond. Um, the cost per unit of the Leclerc Village project, it's a different project, um, was like $400,000 per unit or something like that, up to $650.
And what are you talking about, three, two bedrooms?
Well, it, it was a spread between ones, twos, and threes.
The average came out to be 400?
And the average cost of a buildable lot is in the range of $300,000. Um, and so it is, I just want to further remind the board that whatever the scheme is agreed upon or discussed here should be reasonably related to the actual impacts we're discussing, which I think is generally the number of bedrooms in this particular case. The applicant said 2,500 for, uh, 36 bedrooms. Um, so we're, these figures are relatively arbitrary, but if you're going to make them reasonably related to the costs of the production of a singular unit, um, I guess that could be your, your baseline, but it should be reasonably related to the impacts that we're trying to mitigate for, not for anything else. It shouldn't be random. It should be, I think, uh, well articulated, is my point.
Right. So, you know how, right, so that 10%, one affordable unit, and whatever the affordability gap is that was identified in the HPP. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That would relate it to something reasonable.
Okay, so putting that aside, what can we do about the second one on the cash? Because, see, to me, 90,000 means 12 times three bedrooms, when, when in reality, I think you're going to build four bedrooms over there.
You know, if we're being asked to do a lot more, uh, you know, we, right now, we are, have committed to do three. If you want more money, you know, four helps. I mean, this is, you know, it's not, it's not rocket science, right? You, build a four-bedroom house will be bigger and we can, you know, make more mitigation commitments there. Uh, so, but, you know, we could come back to that. I don't, you know, my mind, it's just math.
I, I think it seems worthwhile to, to do the, to math, the math that, you know, based on the cost of a building lot, um, or the cost of the median-priced home, less the, um, less the, the, the.
The affordable price.
Affordable gap, affordability gap. Um, and then that would get an understanding of what a monetary value could look like, and then there could be a basis for a discussion relative to the cash contribution and/or the land donation.
To build a house is like 400 to about 600 a square foot.
Did you understand what I'm saying?
Yes. Yeah, no, absolutely.
Can we, can we talk about that and very specific, let's do a hypothetical, so that we all understand it? Let's say a building lot is.
Can you go get the HPP?
I can pull it up on there.
Okay.
Go get the HPP.
It's worth going back, yeah.
Because that will tell you what a cash payment in lieu of affordable housing on site would be. Oh, because it's online now for public comment.
You put that on there?
Mary, tell me what I'm searching for.
Sale. Sale price?
Median income, median sales price.
There it is, at the bottom, was that estimate, affordability gap?
Yeah, 300,000. So, you see how your, it's so funny, because you see how your 335 came out to that?
That is just a coincidence.
Yeah. But that's how much, if you gave to the trust per, from our HPP, which is a reasonable evaluation, that's how much we would need, the town would need to buy down a market-rate house to an affordable price.
So, it's a, and the median price is 701,500.
How much?
701,500.
Hack is advertising 3 bedroom, 2,000 affordable house, say, 228, they're selling 228.
228.
What did you say, Arden?
They're selling a 3 bedroom, 2,000 affordable house as part of a, a development for 228,000. It's just, we just got a email today for information session, so 228 is the sale price.
228?
Is the affordable sale price set by Hack.
All right, well, I don't think we're ready to close out this matter tonight. We have to make a decision whether we need to know the LEC result before we close out because of the very, definitely what you said about the 90 days.
Well, I, I think, um, if you're going to condition the decision on the, uh, on the submission of the LEC report, it's not done within 90 days, that would be my concern.
Well, let's ask-
But if there's going to be no condition relative to LEC, then that, that issue, I think, is negated in that case.
Do we want a condition relative to LEC?
No.
I mean, to Mary's point-
Up to Dennis.
You want it?
Yeah.
You want it?
That's that report, right there.
Where's Rob? He's still-
With the, I mean, I would say, though, with the elimination of the 99.9% of the BBW impacts and the increase of the bog restoration project by 3 acres, um, my, my concerns relative to the, uh, net environmental benefit are substantially negated, um, so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Well, can we decide that tonight?
Um, I think we should. I think the piece of the puzzle missing is there seems to be lack of, uh, uh, consistency among board members relative to what mitigation is or is not appropriate, and I don't know if I've heard from Jack or Troy relative to what negotiating room there is. Uh, we've thrown about a number of ideas, but for, for the purpose of getting to the next stage-
I think we're good on the 5.3 acres, do we feel comfortable with that? No.
It's not going to make me change my mind.
I, I don't, I feel good on that.
Dale's not voting.
And Rob?
All right.
Is he here?
He's on it. He would, uh, do. No?
Is he here?
Rob, ask.
He's on the phone, ask him.
You need to go back to Zoom to see if he's there.
I mean, he's on the phone, just ask him.
Hey, you're talking to the LCP right now, Karen.
Rob, are you there?
It looks like he lost his audio, I can see him speaking, but I can't hear him.
Here he is.
How about now?
Rob.
Yeah, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Are you wanting to condition this, um, make an order of, as we say, order of, what is it called, order of-
Conditions.
Order of condition, uh, before we close out, that the LEC come in with their report?
For, for the CC report, I would say I'd be, uh, agreed with the rest of the board as to, uh, close that out as a condition, uh, yeah.
Okay, but there's a, there's a problem, we close it out now, if for chance, they didn't come back within 90 days, right?
Well, I mean, all I'm saying is-
You can say, give me a minute.
If you are going to condition this on-
Can you hear, can you hear Evan?
If the, if the condition will be upon the issuance of an order of conditions, um, the issuance of an order of conditions would inherently come on the heels of the LEC report, and then you would not be bound by the 90-day decision, uh, framework. So, I think I would suggest including the condition relative to the issuance of the order of conditions and removing any condition relative to the completion of LEC's report, because then you're not backed against a regulatory wall.
Okay, okay. How many people are for that, Mary?
I'm, I'm abstaining, present, I'm, I'm, I'm voting present.
Okay.
I'm, I'm agreeable with that.
Okay, I do, too.
Not with Mary's agreement.
I agree with that. Ask Rob.
Okay. What, what did you say?
I said not with what she said.
Not me, nobody cares.
Okay.
Does Rob agree with it?
Rob?
Regarding the environmental report, I, I'm in agreement, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so that's one thing.
Said regarding the environmental report.
Somebody asked, what, what did Rob say?
Rob said he's in agreement.
Yeah, with the, with the environmental report.
Report, to get the, for the condition.
That's the environmental report, yeah.
So, we have a supermajority, so that's done.
We're going to make a motion.
We have, we have to make a motion, okay.
You've, you've, public comment, too.
What's that?
You have to call for public comment.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I, I know somebody did make, say during public comment, but they really should make it during the public hearing.
Who wishes to have, to make public comment?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'd like to make public comment.
Okay.
You go up there, Jack.
Um, Arden Russell, Sturgis Lane, I just want to reiterate my earlier comments about, um, chapter 108 and the general bylaw that limits bedrooms. Over the last couple of months, this community has had many conversations around our housing production plan and the Cape Cod Commission's regional housing strategy, and what I heard loud and clear through all those discussions was, no, we can't have more intense development, no, we have to limit our bedrooms, no, we can't have duplexes in multifamily housing because our waterways are impaired, we need to find another way to create affordable housing. And then, a private developer comes along, and all of a sudden, the bedroom count doesn't matter, all of a sudden, we're allowing increased development, we're ignoring the mandate that our community put in place to limit the number of bedrooms on a parcel to that which was allowed in 2015, that's a maximum of 20 bedrooms on this parcel, says nothing to do with a special permit, has nothing to do with how this property may or may not be permitted. We have a general bylaw that limits the number of bedrooms that's allowed on this parcel, end of story, and I think the planning board, if they approve this project, is ignoring that, which sets a very bad precedent at best and puts our SIR funding at risk at worst, because this then becomes a bogus bylaw if nobody's paying any attention to it. Thank you.
And what bylaw is that?
Chapter, chapter 108, flow neutral bylaw.
Can I try to make a statement?
Go ahead.
But also in that bylaw, it's 108, 6, variance, it says, uh, sore commission, or another, the board of health, you give a variance on these projects.
That should be, you know, relatively limited, but I, I guess I, the one question relative to flow neutral, if the board has questions of flow neutral, is, single-family dwellings in Mashpee are limited to 4 bedrooms by right everywhere. Multifamily projects, just like in a zone 2, are limited to 1 bedroom per 10,000 square feet. So, one question I would have relative to flow neutral is, Willabend was permitted as a multifamily project in 1987 that encompasses a very large land area, does flow neutral apply to their project area, or does flow neutral apply only to the 5 acres? That is a question I don't have an answer to today.
Yeah, but the, but the 5-acre parcel was not part of the original permit.
That is, that is true.
And so, the 19, the, the 2015 restriction on flow does apply to that parcel.
I would just say, I haven't, you know, looked at that in particular, but, uh, you know, the DEP, which regulates our plant, does have a no-nit nitrogen, uh, policy, so we are going to have to completely offset whatever goes into the ground. Uh, part of that will be by the elimination of the 5-bedroom house, which is on a septic system, and those, 5 bedrooms on a septic system and 12 on a plant are fairly close, but we're still short, we'll have to do something else, and we're in discussion with them to, to limit those flows, so, um, so, I, you know, I think that this, this, this bylaw will have to comply with it to the extent that it's applicable, uh, and, but I don't think it's a zoning matter, it has nothing to do with the special permit or, or this board at the moment.
No, it does, because the special permit modification must comply with all town, state, and state regulations and statute, so that's, that's how it ties back in.
Yeah, so obviously, we're, we're on the same page, we have to comply with that, we would accept the condition saying we had to comply with that.
Okay, with that said, we are not closing out this hearing, we'll have to continue it.
Okay.
Get more information. Mary, make a motion.
Get my calendar out.
Is that, we, well, do we have to make a motion to continue the hearing?
I got my calendar out.
Okay.
Before we move on, could I, you know, at, at the outset, we said we were looking for some direction before we undertook completing the drainage, et cetera. Uh, I'd like to see where the board is on this in a larger sense. Are we heading in the right direction? I'm not-
With respect to the drainage?
No, for the project.
With respect to everything.
The project.
You know, uh, and, you know, I know Mary has made the comment that her comments-
Please don't say, just don't put words in my mouth, just, just pass it over to the chair. I get upset when you put words in my mouth, thank you.
Mary Wagon has made the comment that we haven't addressed all of our mitigation concerns, and I was going to ask which of those weren't addressed. I know, uh, she had raised the buffer, um, and we looked at that, again, if this board wanted to waive, uh, the distance between buildings, which early on, we were told, although that had been waived in the past, that we had to adhere to the 20, if the buffer is more important, you know, we can increase the buffer perhaps and shimmy the buildings a few feet closer. So, I, I'd like to hear what issues are open that haven't been addressed to see if we can address them.
Yeah, I, I, I- There's, there's insurmountable barriers to approving this, one of them being the flow neutral bylaw. I've already said, you can read the minutes and figure out what I don't like, it just gets into an argument and a back and forth between me and the project proponent and other, uh, the planning board members.
I don't think we have to get into an argument.
But we have, we've also, we've also, there's been, please don't shake your head at me, this is exactly what I'm talking about.
We are trying to be professional here.
Right, I am, too.
If he's asking you-
Somebody is pushing me to comment when I've made it very clear that I, I'm not comfortable commenting until after we close the public hearing, and I've said that several times, and I've said it politely and professionally, um, otherwise, we've just been getting into arguments and nastiness, and I want to avoid that.
I thought you said something a little earlier tonight, that that mitigation wouldn't get it, which led me to believe that perhaps some mitigation would get it.
Is that you're saying categorically no? To me, this project can be developed with 15 bedrooms. That's it. It's a flow neutral bylaw, it's not a concentration or a nitrogen loading bylaw, it's a flow neutral bylaw, and it, we cannot risk, if, if we're not going to risk our 0% financing for affordable units here in this town, and we made a decision to do that as a planning board in a joint meeting with the select board, you want us to risk the 0% financing for vacation homes? It's not a need, it doesn't, this project does not fit into our local comprehensive plan as a priority plan, okay? So, I'm, I'm not supporting it at this point, the, the mitigation is to reduce the project significantly.
Well, I don't think I, we can say, I can say anything more.
No, I'd like to hear from other members, you know, if possible, and they're willing to comment.
Dennis?
I'm all right with it, I'd just like to see that 90,000 go up some, I'm not asking for 500,000, but we gotta, I'll say 300, you say 90, let's try to come somewhere in the middle, you know, I mean, that's my biggest sticking point on this. I agree with the wetland restoration, and, uh, your, your septic system will handle this, but I'm also concerned about those people that already bought property on, you know, I want to make sure they can build their houses on your property.
We do.
That's my concern, but-
We do, too.
You did a good job mitigating the wetlands and stuff, it's a lot better.
Thank you.
It was a lot better.
I'm feeling the same with, as Dennis, um, I definitely want an affordable house, at least one, two would be better, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out the dollar amount to you for doing this, and I don't think a million, 2, 3, 4, 5, I don't feel that's a lot of money. I mean, I, I love the 5.3 acres, um, I'm sure that was calculated the most intelligent way, where you get the best bang for your buck, so to speak. The 90,000, the way I thought you came up with that was 3 bedrooms for 12 houses, 36 times 2,500, came up to 90,000. That didn't seem right, because, you know, technically, I mean, the way I see it, you violated the special permit by overbuilding, so the bill, the town was negligent in not, you know, keeping their eye on what you were doing, and you acquiesced, and you detrimentally relied upon the town, and now we're here, and we're still talking about the bedrooms. So, I, I feel we have to continue this to maybe get a price on affordable housing, what that number would be.
Well, we can do that math right now.
We can do it right now?
Yeah.
Well, let's do it.
We just got to walk through it.
Do we have the other members, Mike and, and Rob?
Give me a second.
I, I think that, I thought that we were discussing mitigation for the express purpose of trying to go forward with this, it wasn't for any other reason, and we kept asking for more, and I, I get the feeling that there's, there is potentially a little more that we might be able to get, uh, but if that's, if we're going to, if that's where we want to go and get this thing resolved, let's, let's resolve it, let's just get to some final word, and either we say yay or we say nay. I mean, the bedrooms, yes. We keep talking about the goddamn bedrooms, we don't know what the hell the problem is, they don't have any negative impact on water right now because of the hook-up, so, fine, I can, I can understand everything else people are saying, but at some point, we want to act somewhat as a board and proactive about the town of Mashpee. If we want mitigation, to have this thing in a position where we can go forward, fine, but there are several here that are saying they're going to go forward regardless of what we get, you know, so why, you know, what's the purpose? I, I think you've done a pretty good job, if you've come forward with a little more, my, my answer is still the same as it was last time.
Rob, what is your-
But I don't know about anybody else.
Excuse me, Rob, what is your position? Are you, would you agree to this if the mitigation, you know, met your understanding and what you thought was reasonable?
Okay, if, if, if I may, I, the, uh, proposed environmental mitigation-
Wait, speak up, please.
Uh, it's, what, what's that?
Speak up, speak loud.
Okay, uh, oops, that thing went off. Okay, uh, I, I'm in agreement with the proposed, uh, mitigation of the wetlands and the bog restorations and all of that, I think that's a fine job. I'd like to hear a little bit more of what, uh, Arden read into the record earlier about the 2015, uh, general bylaw regarding wastewater flows, and have a really good discussion on that regarding, I, I hate to step on the toes of Mashpee residents, who put that ordinance together in 2015, and, uh, and, and, uh, I, I'd really like to understand that better as going forward. I still have a very significant issue with the overage of bedrooms in the general Willabend development, and I, that's about it, uh, I'll move on, thank you.
I think we've said it all. I guess we have to continue this. I mean, who... I mean, I do consider Arden somewhat of an expert, but who, who would be the end-all and be-all on coming here and explaining what the ramifications of this flow neutral would be with respect to this 12 build?
Health agent and wastewater superintendent.
Well, how, how many feel that we should invite them to the next meeting?
You can also have their, write in a, in a memo as well.
A memo?
No.
They could do a memo?
Oh, yeah.
Would a memo be satisfactory to?
I, I don't know. I mean, I invited the building commissioner here, and, you know, I know he's busy with something else, but I'm not, I'm, I think I jinxed that by asking him to come, so I'm not saying anything.
I like that people that come.
I, I think we'd prefer them to come.
All right.
Because we might have questions for them.
Okay, then I would suggest continuing.
Have we answered Jack's question? Did you get an opinion out of the-
Yeah, I, you know, we, there's a lot of work to do here, and I, you know, I'm hearing that if we can work out the mitigation, that, that we have the support of, of the board or supermajority in that direction. I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth, but if anyone is vehemently opposed to the project, we've, we've heard, obviously, and completely respect the former chair's position, but we want to know there's a path forward here, and I think, I think there's enough of one that we'll, we'll continue.
Okay. So we don't need a motion to continue?
You do.
We do. Okay. Mary?
Just a reminder, your, your March 6 meeting is at the library and not televised.
You know what? I think that's not a good place, because-
No, I agree. That's why I'm reminding you.
It's not going to be televised, so let's make-
When is, when is, um, when is Rob back? When is Rob-
I'm back Easter Sunday.
What is the date of Easter Sunday?
It's early this year.
That's in April.
Yeah.
So that's 31st.
Of March?
Of March, yeah.
So you're talking about April 3rd?
Wait, the next one is March 6.
But he's not back until March 31st. Rob, are you back April 3rd?
Uh, yes. I will be back April 3rd.
So we could go online though, I mean, right?
It's very difficult. You know, if we're gonna, because ideally, we would close and deliberate, and, I mean, if we closed tonight, I'd still ask to, to deliberate when Rob was here. It's too difficult.
So let's not close, and just move it to April. I mean, that's, I don't know if Jack likes that idea, but you gotta remember, Jack, we need four votes.
No, I understand. So there's nothing in March, you're saying?
No, there, there's a March, uh-
We're at, we're at a different meeting place.
20th.
March 6, is it the library and it's not televised?
Okay.
And March 20th, and Rob's on Zoom. He'd be on Zoom.
He'd be on Zoom.
It's not, oh, it's televised, but not-
I'm available on Zoom.
The board is saying it's less than ideal to have him not in the room.
It's really difficult.
And that's the only March meeting?
No.
It was, so again, the 6th is-
It's available for any meeting.
We're meeting on March 6th, it's just not televised, and we're not, and we're at the library.
But I, I'm finding it very difficult.
Oh, I do, totally.
I think that he should be here.
Rob, you're saying you would be available for Zoom for, you know, the meeting with, you know, to understand the flow neutral and its ramifications?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of 108? We can send this to you. Chapter 108, Flow Neutral Reg.
I do not have a mail address.
You have an email?
What do you need?
Yes, I do.
We could send it to you by email.
It's banned too. You can scan it.
What do you need?
He doesn't have this.
It's, it's in the general bylaws. It's online.
Okay, it's, it's in the general bylaws under the planning board, but if, if you don't want to look it up, we can get it to you.
No, I, I will look it up if you tell me exactly what it is, so I can-
I'll email him the link.
You'll, you'll-
I will email him the link. I'll email you all the link.
Kevin will email you the whole thing.
Okay, this, this, you're gonna email me the number or the whole thing or whatever. I'll take whatever you give me.
All right, so with that being said, you would be okay, after you've read all this, to appear by Zoom? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so-
So the next, so that would be the 20th?
March 20th?
March 20th.
Okay. All right.
Is there anything on the agenda?
You think we'll have the report?
What, the LEC report?
Yeah, my master one.
Oh, no.
I don't think they'll have that.
I don't think you'll have it.
Okay, so the only thing is, we have to make sure that superintendent and the Board of Health can be here.
Speak to them in the morning. I'll confirm with you by email.
Okay, so-
Should I make a motion contingent on their being available? Is that?
No.
You'll have to make them-
Date certain.
Date certain.
On that date contingent on their availability, that's what I meant.
Well, we'll have to set a date. Regardless of their availability, it'll have to open at that time. We're far enough out where I'll make sure that they are available. In fact, the Board of Health meets right before your meeting, you know.
So make the motion, and then you'll find out? Is that what they're doing?
Yes.
If I make a motion, we continue the hearing to March 20th?
And then, and they're, if they're unable to be here-
7:10.
7:10.
March 20th at 7:10. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Jack.
So, so we would have, um, Board of Health.
I think everyone's coming now.
Do you think the building commissioner will come?
He, he's expected to come, so.
Benny would.
I mean, I'm going to say-
The only, the only reason he's not here tonight is because I was, I was out last week, and I had forgotten to ask him. And so when I had asked him, he had already made previous engagements. So it's on me he's not here. It's not, it's not his fault.
Okay, so, it's, it's still early, so I guess we could continue.
New business.
Um, let's see, where's my, where's my paper?
What are you looking for, Karen?
Agenda.
Okay, it's, new business. Review and possible decision to support Colton Atkinson's proposed project to develop shared use paths through the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge to improve accessibility and boost usage. The project would consist of trail improvements to approximately 10 miles of trail to create hard surface. Porous trailways to form a network of trails usable by bicycles, strollers, wheelchairs, et cetera. Review of draft plant- Oh, that's it. Is, is he appearing by Zoom?
Yeah.
Here he is.
There he is.
He's with us.
Mr. Atkinson, hello.
I don't think he's on the phone, though.
He is. Can you hear us?
Colton.
Tell him he's on mute.
He's got mute.
Yeah.
Colton, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Can you?
You're on mute.
He's not, he's not.
Is that Colton? It must have fallen out of his pocket. It's probably Troy Miller. Wait, wait, let me talk to him. Hello? Hello? Let's text.
I made a lot of the trailer last week.
Oh, my God.
There's another group about that. I did all the work. I have a gravy, we had kid with us.
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Hey!
All right, wonderful. Let's start the meeting here. So this project, um-
Colton, please speak, speak loudly.
Slow and loud.
She's not sitting down.
So this project is trail improvement throughout the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. So this project is intended to be trail improvements through the National Mashpee Wildlife Refuge. The idea is to create a comprehensive network that will go from the Heritage Park at the north, all the way to south, down through, to the beach, at the, well, the parking lot near the beach at the south. And so this project would be to have non-purviewed surfaces that would be accessible by bike, stroller, or wheelchair, and would just be a harder surface for people to walk on, and it would also connect areas that are not currently connected. So there's several different sections to this. The section north of 151 would be connecting the community that's around John's Pond with the recreational areas at the Heritage Memorial Park, as well as the communities in the Quashnet Valley to include Southport, as well as the multifamily homes that are in the area. So this project would primarily take use of existing trails that are in the wildlife refuge, with the addition of the Southport property that would connect Algonquin Road to the trail that runs through by John's Pond, where the John's Pond Park is. And so with this, that would connect all of those communities to each other, and also create a rather large trail going through them. And then at the Lowell Road, Old Barnstable Road, you could have a sidewalk that then continued to the trail where it picks up south of Route 151, in between the Mashpee High School and the Mashpee Commons. And this trail would then continue down south along the river to Route 28, where it could then meet up with another trail that would be connected by an existing shared use path to a trail that does not currently exist, but lies within the Mashpee Wildlife Refuge. That would be connecting then to the Great Hay Road Trail, which would also meet at the north side of Great Neck Road South and run through the wildlife refuge, connecting down to Red Brook Road. And there would also be a ring trail that would connect the communities that are along Route 28, so they can have back tie-ins to it. Whereas the connection on the north side of Great Neck Road South would provide connections for people who are trying to go through the Mashpee Commons, through existing shared use paths that would be at the exit there, as well as via the shared use path that's along Great Neck South Road to the communities along that road. And then New Seaberry would also have connections if the town were to decide to add a sidewalk along Red Brook Road, which would then connect to this, the point at Red Brook Road where the trail goes north and south to the Jay Hoop Pond Conservation Area. And so that would help provide connections for people in New Seaberry, as well as communities that live along Red Brook Road, as well as the tie-in from Amy Brown Road, which would help people on Monmouth Scully Island connect into the trail. And then continuing south to that parking lot by Jay Hoop Pond would provide another connection for people on the southern side of New Seaberry's area. And then if the town wanted to, they could provide a sidewalk or a shared use path that would continue all the way down to the town's beach. This project does not include those sidewalks or the sidewalks that would provide the connection between Route 151 and Lowell Road, partially just because you have to draw a line into where the project should go somewhere, so I decided to keep it entirely within the wildlife refuge area. And so this will be aiming for the Community Preservation Committee to provide funds for a feasibility study, which would ultimately hopefully lead to the actual construction of these trails throughout the region. So the idea here is just to improve trail access for more people and to create a comprehensive trail network similar to what exists at the Shining Sea Pathway, the Cape Cod Rail Trail, and along the canal. I think that this would provide great recreational opportunities for people in Mashpee, and would lead to greater usage and appreciation for the wildlife refuge area. So I am a bit delayed, so if you give a question, I might respond just after, you know, 10 seconds of actually hearing what you said.
Okay, Colton, what are the, what would the porous trailways be made of? Gravel, which can to a wheelchair?
The trailways would be, that would be something that the study would look into, but I think that one thing that it could be would be pavers, like what currently exists along Route 130. There's also non-purviewed, like asphalt that the, or the previous asphalt that water is able to seep through, so it wouldn't provide any issues with drainage. But that would be something I think the feasibility study would need to look into.
Do you have any kinds of calculations on what this would, 10 miles of this would cost?
Million.
Do I have to calculate what?
This pavement is going to be-
Well, pavers, I, I can't admit to pavers for 10 miles.
And some of this is federal land. They may not let you for, you know, a trail on.
Oh, guys, just bear in mind his-
Did you ever look at the trails we already had? Because we, years ago, we tried to connect them like you're talking about. And I, I did a lot of trails with Mr. Fadella, and we had a group of us, and we connected a lot of them, but they're probably overrun by now, you know, and stuff. But you should talk to Tom Fadella, because he, he, we did, we did a lot of trails and tried to connect them. Even the Cape Cod Trailway, they were signed that we went down to the beach, like over to the New Seaberry and stuff. So you should talk to him about what trails are there and how we can extend them, make it up, you know, new trails, because there's a lot of them, they just have to be extended to, to connect to another trail.
Colton's project is about a feasibility study, not construction.
It's made a cost.
It's about feasibility, not construction.
But I would expect it would probably be around $5 million for the entirety of the trails. As far as the trails themselves, these trails are all existing trails, with the exception of the one that would go from Route 28 over to Great Hay Road. That one would be a new trail that does not currently exist. The rest of these are existing trails, but the surface of them is not conducive for any wheel vehicles to be on.
Well, Great Hay Road has a road all the way through it. It's a dirt road that you could just maybe put a grader down there. I mean, and then we made a trail right beside that. It's called the Pine Berries. That's, it's on Great Oak Road South, and it runs along that road, and there's a lot of pines and cedar, and has sinkholes along that trail we made. It's pretty cool. It comes out to Red Brook Road, and then you go across the street from there, and you go into the wildlife sanctuary. Now, they already have trails all through that. But they risk, you know, that, that road there, you could go drive down. You used to be able to drive down for years, right? I mean, you know that. Seems like this-
Yeah, so Great Hay Road, all of these, they are currently existing, but like you said, they have been a bit overgrown. So having like a hard surface at the base would help prevent those maintenance costs that we have to do. As well as with that, when you have Community Preservation Committee funds, Mary would be able to tell you better than I, but I believe they have to be used for improvement, not maintenance.
Right.
So I like it.
I like that idea.
I like it. I, I think that it's something that the town has wanted to do for a long time, Colton, and it's, it's obviously, can you hand me?
Yes.
Okay. It's obvious that you spent an awful lot of time on this, and I really appreciate it. I, I think, you know, some money to kind of be used to figure this out, plan it, like a feasibility study, I, I think is fine. I, I think that it'll be, we, we were trying to, to push it through the Rotary, and I think, Colton, you, you've really, you, you've, you've, you've removed a huge barrier by taking it out of the commercial center of, of, around the Rotary. You know what I mean? It, it looks like it flows better. We were always- It, it looks like it flows better, we were always stuck with that, we wanted, we wanted that to be the, the center of the greenway, was the commercial center around the Rotary, and you've, by pushing it over, you've, you've solved a lot of problems. So that's why I'm kind of like, wow, I kind of like this, I like the work he's done already, because he figured something out. And, right, and that feasibility, that, that feasibility planning document or effort would figure out exactly what could be done on federally owned land. Like, some trails might not be able to be as accessible as others, because they might not want pavers inside their forest. But that doesn't mean that there can't be areas around a trailhead that aren't fully accessible, do you know what I mean? Like, you see that up in New Hampshire a lot, you, you, you know, you, there'll be like a mile of fully accessible trail that will get you deep into the forest for that experience, and then there goes the trail that goes up the mountain, you know what I mean? So it can be a combination. But I like it, I think, go for it. Stone dust, right, right? And no bridges, right? No bridges.
Bridges, yeah.
That has to be replenished.
Yeah, no.
Who would maintain that?
Well, I.
We got the Mashpee Corps.
The feasibility study is what is, he's seeking, will enumerate all of the barriers and potential costs of construction, and ideal mechanisms to achieve the goal. Now, the question I have, Colton, if you don't mind, and if it's okay, Madam Chair. Who's the, who is the, who's the applicant to the CPC? Is it Colton Atkinson? Is it the Friends of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge? Who's the recipient of the funds?
So I.
Is it the Conservation Commission?
I don't, I didn't realize that I then have to be the recipient, or could I have the town be the recipient of the funds?
I think that's, that's a detail that should be ironed out. And it's something we could certainly discuss.
You're right, so the Friends of the Mashpee Wildlife Refuge might be willing to do it. There's some active conservation groups that, you know, you need a 501(c)(3), a charitable organization, probably, something like that.
Environmental Coalition might be something.
And, you know, it could be the Conservation Department.
I asked them to do that years ago, I'm not sure if MECC would be willing to do that, but.
Now, that's where I'm wanting.
Okay.
Mike's dying to do it.
But he asked, on the feasibility study, where would, if we did it in segments over a period of many years?
Yes, it could outline phasing approaches, of course.
Where would we begin?
The scope of the feasibility study can cover anything we, that, that we procure within the scope.
Just a few more ideas.
And who maintains the trail?
That would have to be ironed out as well. Presumably, I mean, the Wildlife Refuge is composed of a variety of partners, all with numerous maintenance obligations. Some of it volunteer, some of it AmeriCorps, some of it the federal government, some of it the state, some of it the town in Aranda. So I think for Colton, I'm more than happy to help you identify who would be the lead organization on this, whether that be CONCOM or the Friends. Someone able to receive the funds is going to have to be identified to work with you on this. And obviously, some discussions relative to maintenance of the program would be important, but that could be a part of the feasibility study itself.
So where, where'd you get this funding from?
Community preservation money can be used for plans and feasibility studies.
You could probably get a ton of contractors to volunteer time.
That's the other thing, when we talked about the trails, the, the piece that was expensive was the bridge. But the trails themselves, there were tons of volunteers to build the trails, so you can do that. But also, people that were involved, Colton and Evan, you should look at the history of how the wildlife refuge was created, because like Ducks Unlimited, Trout Unlimited, Trout Unlimited, they all, they all pitched in, and then, and when we were trying to make the greenway, they were very active, they wanted to come to our meetings and stuff, so they might be willing to be the holder of the money. And the other thing you can do, Colton, is start a 501(c)(3).
Can I comment as well?
Small materials for the ducks.
Colton, first, I just want to say, this is, this is really cool. It's really good, this is a great idea, as far as a feasibility study. I think this is a great, a very good opportunity to perhaps partner with the Mashpee Wampanoan Tribe. This is one of our, I mean, I can speak from a natural resources point of view, as far as the tribe goes, we're, the tribe's very interested in being stewards of the land in the Mashpee National, the Mashpee Refuge, it should be a good opportunity, and perhaps the tribe has access to grant funding opportunities, as being a federally recognized tribe. I know for a fact, there are, there's grants out there for land stewardship, working with tribes. So I just want to say, good job, and perhaps we can all partner.
I think you probably have my email, so if you'd like to reach out, I'd definitely be interested in hearing more about what the tribe thinks about the plan.
Sure.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it.
Just beginning.
Colton, when do you want to apply for this money? I mean, on the assumption that we can identify a partner for, for the project to receive the funds, or you establish your own 501(c)(3) in the interim. Are you looking to apply for this for the October Town Meeting? So an application made by July? July?
Yes.
April 30th, something like that. So, I mean, that's two months away, Colton, for the deadline. I guess in the interim, I can just assist Colton, and between now and then, he could, we could identify some of those issues, and perhaps the board would consider a letter of support at that time.
Oh, yeah, let's wait a little bit. Let's see what happens with the Dale Oakley connection.
Yeah, absolutely, keep me in the loop. We can, I, I've seen projects like this get put together very quickly when, you know, the, it's a good project, and everyone's behind it, so, keep me in the loop.
Yep. And just know, Colton, that, see how many comments you already, you already got? People, people are gonna say, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna share a lot of ideas with you, a lot of good ideas. It's gonna really bring the town together.
Wildlife Refuge people are focused on building their center, remember that.
So, Colton, do you know that, that the wildlife, the refuge, the wildlife refuge people came to the Select Board to ask for support for a new, for a.
A visitor's center.
A visitor's center on Route 28?
Yeah, so, I did, I went to the Friends of the Mashpee Wildlife Refuge as well, and I talked to them about this plan, and they were generally well-receiving of it. The other perk of this plan's layout would be that their proposed facility would be about a quarter mile, a half mile south of where the new connection into Route 28 and Great Hay Road would be. So this, their site would be well-located for this proposed layout.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Well, I'm sure our town planner will be available to assist you to contact the right people and.
I'll follow up with Colton before the end of the week, and, and connect with Dale as well.
Okay, did you hear, Colton?
Sounds good.
Okay. Take care, thank you.
Thanks, you too. Bye.
Bye.
You could tell Eddie'd go home, I bet, right?
What's that?
Does Ed, is Ed on the agenda?
Wait, we have a.
There's an engineer report, if you want to hear it.
We do have a report, though.
You got my agenda.
Let me jump over there?
Yeah, so he can then go.
Okay. Engineer report, project reviews and inspections, Ed.
Anything new?
So, no, Madam, Madam Chair, members of the board, there's no new reports since my last discussion. We had done some reviews recently for the zoning board, and, and we had finished some construction inspections out at the country called State this past fall, and just recently, a week or so ago, I signed a, a letter, certification letter to close out the Sherwin-Williams project, which is complete now, but there's no other active items to discuss. The latest active item really was the one at the last attended item, was the three items looking from New Seaberry to release some of their former escrow, or existing escrow amounts, which you all prepared at the last hearing.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
Going back to new business review of draft planning board annual report, and possible vote to submit to town manager's office.
I just, the only thing I would add is what, what, how we represent the planning board and on other committees.
I can do that.
Yeah. Because, yeah. Eo, right, Dale, you do EOC, your historical committee commission.
Oh, wait a minute, we're supposed to vote to submit to the town manager's office.
No, that she's just making suggestions on how to modify.
To, to do our, who, what, what committees we sit on representing this board? So your site plan review?
Design review.
Design review, which doesn't meet too often. So we just add that, committees we sit on.
I can add it, I actually intentionally removed it from this draft, but I'm happy to put it right back in.
And so we'll.
I'm on the charter and CPC.
Yep.
We'll, we'll let it go, or do you want to make, take a motion contingent, you know?
Oh, I, I would ask that you approve it with any, any amendments.
With that amendment.
With that, with the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
How many votes?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's simple enough. Okay.
Trust me, those boring lines, years later, when somebody's looking at like, whoa, when, when did I sit on that? It's all there.
Okay. Oh, it's the implementation. You're not doing anything tonight, is it?
No, actually, I, I read the minutes, someone said that, on the municipality, I was gonna do, do you want to get some professional work?
We wanted to reevaluate, and I did reevaluate it. There are, I would say, substantial organizational problems with the current implementation table as it pertains to that chapter, and I have some thoughts on how to structure it. And there are also broad general, there's straight up incomplete sentences in it, so I'll throw that out there. Further, I think, and this isn't the only chat, the only part of the implementation plan that I think suffers from this critique, I think actually the Natural Resources section is similar in that, I'd say the goals are quite solid and consistent, some of the, the policies are, are, are appropriate, but many actions that we included are actually policies, and in many cases are redundant, a policy's already. So I need to evaluate those policies with my other department heads, to define more specific actions to support those policies. Other implementation sections are better, but I, I had similar comments on Natural Resources that I've prepared.
I have comments as well.
Municipal buildings, facilities, and services is the most critical in terms of needing to address those.
All the questions, but I didn't bring it with me tonight, because I didn't.
No, so I, my intention is to reevaluate that particular section.
It's so big.
It needs to be restructured.
Yeah, it's such a big section. It, it, you know, I think, I think we could have gotten through Natural Resources tonight, but not tonight.
What I would like to do, and if the board is willing, I mean, for, one thing I'm thinking about for municipal buildings, facilities, and services, because it covers so much, is within the implementation table itself, actually structure it in accordance with, instead of having it be kind of all over the place, a human service action here, and then a police action here, it needs to be organized, I think, by the actual service or facility.
Well, that's easy.
That would help out a lot.
As a, as a start. And then, then we need to remove redundancies between actions that are actually policies saying the same thing, and build out the actions to properly support the policies.
The way I saw it.
And I have the same critique with Natural Resources as well.
Evan, the written part on the municipal facilities, it, it spells it out very nicely.
So I, I'm happy with the chapter, so, there, but there are still gaps to fill, but we're addressing those. So there was some confusion for me after the last meeting, that we were talking about the chapter. I, I was reading the chapter, and I was struggling to find the major problems, but then I looked at the implementation table, I'm like, ah, I see.
Yeah, the chapters are orderly, but not the.
So, March 6th, for us, is at the library, it's not a televised meeting, we have a very light agenda. I'd like to focus solely on the, on the, on the LCP, and the implementation table in particular. If that's okay with us. I'm, I'm already prepared to talk about Natural Resources, and maybe we should meet just to go over my thoughts, and your thoughts, if that's right with you.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, in the, between now and then, I'll work with our consultants to restructure and refine that chapter to re-present to you. And I'd like to focus on those two chapters only.
Yeah, that will.
Unless you want to take more, but I think.
No, that will do it. That, that will, that will, that will be enough time. I mean, that will be enough for that meeting, because.
It says there are 13 town buildings, that's what we're talking about, right? Town buildings?
Municipal facilities and services, yes.
Okay, so you could take each building, and what they do, you know, and break it out.
I want to break it down by, not buildings, but by, by service types.
By service types.
Public safety, human services, schools, for example.
Yeah, okay, just the way it's broken up here.
Is, but I want the implementation table to reflect that structure. The implementation table is very chaotic, and truthfully, it should have been addressed before I, I provided to you. So I'd like to just refine that again. It's too, it's, it's too all over the place, Mary, Mary was 100% right.
I was so confused.
So.
So can, can we spend time on March 6th, diving into those two chapters in particular?
Do we have any special permits, or?
We have nothing going on the 6th, no.
Okay, well, maybe we can do the whole thing.
Let's do as much as we can, but focus particularly on those two chapters.
I think those two chapters.
They're the ones I think that need the most work.
All right.
Yeah. All right, so I found this really helpful, I gave a copy to Karen, Hanging in the Balance, by the Association to Preserve Cape Cod.
I think I have, I think I printed it.
This is the regional natural resources plan, so, I don't, you don't have your camera with you, do you?
No.
All right, so I made, made a note, these are my notes thus far. I won't give it to you guys, because I don't want to overwhelm you, unless you want it.
No.
Not now. But those are my notes so far, and this really helps, made everything in it. But not Mashpee-centric, you know what I mean? Like it needs to be. The Natural Resources chapter is going to be excellent, because it's already, it's already like 80% of the way there.
Natural Resources is almost there, just, there's a little bit of expansion that needs to happen in some of the policies, and then just the removal of some redundancy between the policies and the actions.
I was thinking the same, a lot of the policies I felt were actions, and kind of, a lot of the goals I had as policies, and I kind of eliminated a lot of the goals to make, I just had one goal, as far as Natural Resources go. The water, I feel like we should either include the water quality and coastal into the Natural Resources, or split Natural Resources up even further, one or the other.
It's true, right?
Yeah, it's, it kind of overlaps in such a great, unless you broke, unless you broke down, like, Natural Resources into wetlands and, like, land, land resources, you know?
It's not a bad approach, the way that Evan was talking about the municipal facilities and the services.
It's a logical way to approach the structure of the table itself.
At least we don't forget anything, because, right, because I read the APC, APCC thing, and I, I was like, oh, Vernal Pool, you know? We.
I think the implementation table itself should correspond relative, with some general consistency to the actual structure of the chapter.
It makes it easy when you go with this, this thing here, and you look at, for example, Town Hall, Board of Health, okay, what else has to do with the Board of Health? You know, just isolate all these different.
Yeah, I have a firm understanding of what I think is needed, and I'd love to meet with you to talk about our comments before we meet on the 6th, if that's all right.
Sure.
It's a big chapter.
Okay, thank you. Water quality report, I don't have much to say, except if you missed the Sewer Commission meeting, or maybe it wasn't on the Sewer Commission meeting, I'm not sure which meeting it was, I went to that, and the Select Board meeting on TV, I watched it. Phase 2, the land surveyors will be mapping out sewer pipes for Phase 2, and the Phase 2 should go out for bid in 2025, we've got a year. As we all know, Mass DEP reported that a Schumett Pond has the highest concentration of PFAS in surface waters and fish tissue, 52 water body, of 52 water bodies tested in the state. So we're doing something about that, right, with the alum?
No, you said PFAS?
Oh, that's not, that's with.
So, in a way. So, in a way, the, so Joint Base Cape Cod is gonna start to filter the water going in? And is it for PFAS? Yes. It's, the main goal is for PFAS. Yep.
Okay.
But the secondary benefit is the phosphorus that is requiring us to do an alum treatment every once in a while. It's coming back to me as I'm.
Alum for phosphorus.
Yeah.
Andrew Gottlieb spoke at the Sewer Commission meeting last week, and didn't tell us anything we didn't really already know. He said Aquay Bay nitrogen lows are staying the same. This is what I'm just remembering. All of Pompanesset Bay has been poor water quality in the last four years, but the water quality is high near the inlets. He said, I didn't know this, he said eelgrass in Jayhoo and Amlin Pond, it's gone.
Gone, yeah.
I didn't know it was recently gone. He said recently gone.
It's been going for a while.
Yeah, he said, if we get nitrogen levels down, we know that eelgrass will come back. The target concentration for nitrogen is 0.38. Now, he didn't say, is that for everything, or overall, average? I don't know. But he did pose the rhetorical question, how do we continue to issue building permits when water is at a critical level? And then we had the UMass expert, you know, the successor, I guess, to Dr. Howe, who spoke at the last Select Board meeting.
No, he didn't.
Not the last, at the.
He died, didn't he, Dr.?
No, 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 the.
The new man, I can't think of his name right now. But he said, same thing that Dr. Howe said, water quality continues to degrade. And that was, you know, I guess that's really all you need to know.
Was that Ed Eichner who spoke to you?
Yes, 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 it was.
Right.
Yeah.
MDL solution, ready guy.
Yes, he seemed knowledgeable. And he did say, you know, what's the best thing we could do, because David Whedon asked for other suggestions of how he could accelerate, and he said, best way is to accelerate the sewer system, which, you know.
But he did say that, that if the town wanted him to put together a white paper about other things we could do, he was available.
Said that. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Town Planner Report, Harbor Management.
The upcoming meeting has been canceled solely because the consultants are prepared to present to us draft chapters of the Harbor Management Plan, so they'll be provided to us, I think, in the next week or two. We'll probably have a month to review those chapters before we convene again to begin offering comments on where they stand.
Housing production.
The draft is online for public comment. We had to push the public comment period back a week because of my absence. Doesn't necessarily compromise any of our timelines, except it pushes the closure of the public comment period, which is March 11th, right up to the day prior to the Affordable Housing Committee's next meeting, so Alexis and I will have to make sure we have comments received appropriately compiled for the committee's consideration on the 12th. So after that meeting, assuming the comments are received and edits required, we would work to produce those edits and submit thereafter to you and the Select Board for adoption. One note is that the executive summary has been added. It is currently at eight pages, we're gonna try to refine it to much less. We don't think it's much of a summary.
Is there any follow-up communication out about asking people to respond, or?
Yes, so we've put out a press release, all of the regulatory boards have been notified, the schools have been notified, we've asked anyone with a message board to share their opportunity to comment, it's on the town's website and Facebook page, so do let everyone know that the draft plan is available in hard copy in my office, should anyone want to read it there, and available online. Three weeks, it'll be open.
Mashpee TV, bring something out? I'm just curious.
I haven't, I didn't set anything up with Mashpee TV yet, but could.
And then where's, where, so the, all right, so the public comment period closes on the 11th.
Correct.
It goes to the Affordable Housing Committee on the 12th.
Yes.
And then we have it on our, on our agenda to look at on the, on March 20th.
I hope it can be done the 20th. We might be looking at the first meeting in April.
Okay. Oh, yes, I get it.
Just depending on the nature of any edits that are needed. If not, much is needed, it's very possible it can be there on 20th.
Okay. Board Committee Reports, Cape Cod Commission.
Cape Cod Commission closed its public comment period on its regional housing strategy, so that should, the final copy should be issued probably in a month, I suppose.
About the Charter Review?
We meet, at our next meeting, I think we're gonna finalize a survey, and we meet next on February 26th in the, in the Pompanesset Room upstairs.
Community Preservation Committee?
So we voted on, we voted to submit warrant articles to the Select Board, one of them being, there's a couple of administrative things we're doing, putting aside $40,000 for administrative costs, putting our 10% in, our adjusted 10% into the buckets, that's for town meeting. They did, we did vote affirmatively to recommend $100,000 for an open space and rec plan, and it's my understanding that the Select Board put that on the warrant. $74,000 for improvements at the sports fields at Herbertich Park, it's basically getting rid of a dumpy shed, rebuilding the shed, and taking an area that's kind of used for storage and making a real concessions stand, so that will be good. And then I, I know that we, that, and I believe the Select Board put that on the warrant, the $550,000 for an alum treatment of a Schumett Pond, the CPC voted to recommend that to the Select Board, but Lynn, did the Select Board put the, okay, so the Select Board put that on the warrant, and then, of course, we're working on a land purchase.
But, but they, they wanted some qualification about the fact that the base wouldn't start paying until the next year.
Okay, so something about timing.
The sentence was gonna, was gonna be added to say that the base wouldn't pay until this year, and that's their base budget.
And then we're still working on a land purchase, you know, we get an appraisal, and then we go into negotiations with the landowner. We haven't gotten the appraisal yet, but we have submitted something as a placeholder for the warrant, so we'll, we'll see if that gets on the warrant or not. And that's it.
Okay. No meeting for design review, plan review?
No meeting.
EOC?
There was a meeting on the 29th of January, but I don't have my, I don't have my notes, so I can't provide an update. But there's a meeting next Monday, next EOC, next Monday.
The floor?
No meeting, yet, right, Evan?
We have an application upcoming. I've been struggling to connect with Earl and Pham, so I'll be navigating that, but we'll need to convene very soon.
Good.
What time does EOC start? Is that like a 4:00?
It's a 4:00, yes.
Okay, let's remember, we have a March 6th meeting in the conference room at the Mashpee Library.
Has that been confirmed, the library? Because I have not spoken with the library director, is my point. I was just told we were.
Well, I don't know, but Wayne called me specifically to tell me that.
Okay, so I'm assuming he set that up with Kathy, but I will confirm with the director.
Thank you.
I just want to be sure, before it's in the newspaper, you know, that we confirm that it's there.
And we're gonna confirm that we have some recording or some, you know.
That request has been submitted.
Memorialization of the meeting, since we don't have television.
Do we have anything else on the agenda, just LCP? Okay, that's good.
Normal start?
Normal start, normal start?
Yeah, normal start, 7:00 PM, and take a motion for adjournment.
So be.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.